... My dear? She deserves to go.
More than I deserve.
She deserves it enough, man.
But you have to...
You might have one of my books up there.
You know. That's my old worry is get, get crazy head over your head.
I was in Mexico.
That was Mexico. He said.
I don't think, I don't...
Let's bring it all back. How do you do? John Curtis.
I'm a liar.
Now, for the burns and the bad things that need raising. That girl's crazy.
Well, I didn't mistake her. I was like being here to tell the town, so there isn't too much. There's more.
Wonder why you wouldn't?
Well, we had, we had that chair before, stop.
Oh, we have the top ones or something. We found it. No one thinks that's all about there. Don't know why we can't see that. It wasn't to everybody. They were not, you know, they were not. But you came to see everybody. You came to that man.
That's what?
Maybe tonight, but maybe today. Thing that I usually put a man, but today I was just trying to...
Well, I've been, my email was, uh, certainly perfect. Right in heaven, have a baby, grandkids. I then came down to check. It's so...
Yeah.
I can't read you.
I can't read that either. Because it's in the line. All kinds of dead.
Sure.
My chair.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you don't check.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I can't find. I can't read that either. Because it's in the line. All kinds of dead. Sure. My chair.
Well, he was supposed to keep. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You can help me. I don't want to. See, if you don't check.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can help me.
Yeah.
See, if you don't check.
Yeah. I can't find. Yeah. Better. I, better. Yeah. So the chop is... Yeah. So the chop is...
Why you doing that?
Yeah. 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 And if anybody wanted to come, I'd take that out there. I don't know what I'm saying.
I just...
Everybody better.
That's a good thing. That part, yeah. That one, that one, he wasn't sure. Okay. How are you going?
And for the bridge, prayer please. Father, I would very thank you right now for this hour. Thank you, Father. Bless your name because you remain worthy to be blessed. Father, we ask you, bless this group, bless this commission, bless the citizens of this town. We thank you now for what you've done and come through for us. And Father, we ask you right now to bless this whole wide world. Father, bring peace, pleasant confusion. And Father, you know, conditions and situations right now. We ask you to be the judge. Father, you too ought to strike. But if you do, we're gonna be so glad to give you this praise. For we do know as praises go up, blessings do come down. We thank you now, we know you. Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of our home.
Thank you. Before we start, I mean, we always have two tidbits for you that we like to do live by and just anticipate and hear. Uh, we have accomplice lines set up and the now, and that line number is one dash nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two. Access code is thirty-two, thirty-four, seven. And this is not a toll free number. You may be subject to the choice according to your own distance plan. When the chairperson open the meeting for public comments, please follow the instructions below. Please dial five. The moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and your address and you'll be allowed to speak for three minutes after you come to the proposal. So with that being said, this being a workshop, nothing else, we will go to number three. Members of the public to discuss the lazy tortoise ranch subdivision. Now, if anyone from the public would like to speak to, for, or against. You can't make a decision tonight, but we're here to listen.
I will. Okay. Just... We can't see each other.
Okay. Neither see your name and address.
My name is Tom Ferguson. I live at thirty-seven eighty-eight Strickland Landing Drive, Perry, Florida. And, um, I'm here to hopefully give the board some information about four subjects. One is information that's available on the lazy tortoise, commercial activity, which I believe that they conduct, the road problem that we have with the potential subdivision, and the financing. On the information side, in order for this board to make a sound, informed decision that's fair to all the parties on the project, like the lazy tortoise, you need complete information. You got to have as much information as you can in order to have a good idea of what the lazy tortoise wants to do, how they intend to do it, and how it will affect other people in the county. The original applications and site plan, which is a copy of theirs, was submitted to the planning department in March and shows it was supposed to be a two-hundred-and-forty-five acre tract with forty-five lots of approximately five acres each to be used for residential use. Other information available, not provided on the application, came primarily from the lazy tortoise ranch website. And it provided a different picture. Some information was provided to you, uh, in a package that I put together back in April, about three pages long and has a lot of photocopies. If you don't still have that and you want another copy, we have some available. In any event, I believe that the board should request that the applicant provides you with a complete copy of their website, either printed or electronic form, as that website existed at the same time they submitted their application, along with any changes that have been made to the website since that time, because there have been a number of changes and they are significant. Getting this from the applicant will give them the opportunity to make sure that the information you receive is complete and correct, as opposed to the impeachment deal was coming from some other party. Some of the things that appear on the website that trigger additional information that I think you should look at was in mention the homeowners association. And it would be available to do bookings for these RV sites that are planned for this subdivision, possibly development, maintenance of development facilities and development rooms. It's important to know how this HOA is going to operate because it's somewhat unique, because most HOAs don't get into things like booking, business enterprises for their, uh, members. It should be noted, because this HOA is unique, that they're gonna have to create one that's for lazy tortoise and can't be just a cut and paste type thing that might be done. Emphasis was also placed in the website that this whole development is gonna have a substantial nature preserve. Well, the nature preserve doesn't show up on the site plan. Uh, I'm assuming that the nature preserve will be a portion of every one of the ten blocks that are going to be put into the subdivision. This is gonna require deed restrictions and/or restrictive covenants, and the board needs to know what those are, how they're worded, and most importantly, who's gonna enforce it. Homeowners associations can be notoriously inefficient at enforcing deed restrictions. I lived in Strickland Landing subdivision for fifteen years. We had a whole host of deed restrictions. No, nobody enforced any of it. To my knowledge, we don't even have a homeowners association. So just having the deed restrictions is irrelevant if you don't have someone to enforce it. It's interesting that the nature preserve is emphasized so much on the website. When you look at the whole tract of land, the most environmentally sensitive part of this property is Spring Warrior Creek on the south end. However, they've outlined to have four lots right on Spring Warrior Creek. That doesn't seem consistent with wanting to preserve the natural aspect of this piece of property. I don't think that there should be any lots allowed on Spring Warrior Creek. It's, it's too sensitive of an area to have lots with minimum setbacks right down there on the creek. That is, that's a personal opinion and not really a fact. They mentioned a clubhouse. It doesn't show up on the site plan. If they have a clubhouse, does it require parking? If it requires parking, that could change the calculations for school motorhomes. If you have a clubhouse that's available for all of the participants, residents and the renters in the subdivision, they have to have a way to get to that clubhouse without driving vehicle. It's counterproductive and you don't want bicycles, drop carts and stuff like that on the road. So they're gonna need sidewalks and/or bike paths. That needs to be known and laid out because that could affect how the roads are drawn. So that information needs to be available to the county engineer. Website solicits investors who are potentially future lot owners to invest in lazy tortoise to create the money to do their infrastructure. I'm going to talk about that in a couple of minutes in the area that deals with finance. Most concerning to me is, though, so many of the things I just mentioned that were on the website are now gone. They were taken down. And my question is, why were these things taken down? The second item has to do with the commercial aspect. Website back in March stressed very heavily that this subdivision was gonna have four recreational vehicle sites on every lot. That was their sales point, and these were gonna be income-producing lots or sites. Potential number could be a hundred and eight, forty-five times four, in addition to the forty-five homes that might be over there. So that's two-hundred-and-twenty-five potential living units in this subdivision generated traffic. So much emphasis was placed on these RV sites that at one point in the website or on the website, they made a statement, and I quote, "We will sell you four investment-grade RV sites." Not, "We will sell you a lot with four RV sites on it." "We're gonna sell you four RV sites." "If you wanna put a house on it, that's okay." So this place could theoretically end up with nothing but RV sites. In numerous occasions, I've talked to county planner, Mr. Griner, and the local attorney, and two things always come up in a conversation about RV sites. One is that the county commission, you're well aware of this, you talked about it in the last regular meeting or meeting before, allows a lot anywhere in unincorporated Taylor County to have up to four recreational vehicles on it. I haven't seen the ordinance on that, but I, so many people say it, I take it for a fact. And I'm not arguing that having four sites on a lot is not permissible. I'm not attempting to do that. It is permissible. The other item they talk about is under Florida statute five-one-three-point-oh-one definitions, a recreational vehicle park is defined as a lot with five or more RV sites. I'm not arguing that any park of lazy tortoise would fit into that definition, because if you are an RV park, you have to go through a different permitting process. Not what I'm talking about. What I am talking about is the commercial activity. From the Taylor County clerk of co, or tax collector's office, you, if you operate one rental site on a lot, you're conducting a business. You have to have an occupational license to conduct that business issued to the court of the tax collector's office. You would have to contact the Department of Revenue to get a tax number so that you could remit sales tax on all rental fees that you collect. You would have to collect the Taylor County tourist development tax and remit that to the local tax collector. You have to collect a tourist development tax and send it to the state. If you're conducting a business, that's a commercial activity. Under the Taylor County Comprehensive Plan, under objective Roman numeral one point three-point-two, you find all of the land use or land district descriptions and what's allowed in each of those land districts. On page nine, we can find the definition of the land district agricultural slash rural residential, which is what the area that we are talking about lives in, lies in. About two-thirds of the way down the paragraph for that particular district is the wording, and I quote, and this is what is allowed, "Very limited neighborhood, commercial, or public use may be allowed, subject to appropriate land development regulations, to ensure compatibility and harmony of scale and character." Key word, it starts out, "very limited." This subdivision's gonna have a hundred and seventy or a hundred and eighty RV sites, potentially. That cannot be considered very limited. Consequently, the way this subdivision is proposed, it would be in violation of Taylor County's comprehensive landing, and you would not be able to approve it. Even if every lot doesn't have RV site, at some point, you have to make a determine, what do you mean by very limited? I think it may be ten percent. Ten percent of the lot would be four and a half or up to five. So if at least five or more of the lots had RV sites in it, that would be very limited. If you got more than that, you would exceed that, and that would put it outside the definition of very limited for the comprehensive plan. The next item is roads. Strickland Landing Drive, the road that I live on. In nineteen ninety-seven, the board of county commissioners created the women. This road was built to serve thirty or so lots that are on Strickland Landing Drive. It was not built to serve a whole new subdivision with potentially two-hundred-and-twenty-five living units and the heavy equipment and dump trucks that would be going over the road during the construction phase of the road in the subdivision. Road ends in a cul-de-sac. It's from to the end. There's no provisions were put for that road to be extended. It's gonna be extended now under this program into this subdivision, because that's where the entrance to the subdivision is proposed. It was built at a pavement standard that was far less than what's required of subdivision today. This subdivision will have to have DOT-type paved asphalt roads in turn. Strickland Landing Drive was a chicken-seagull road, much less than a paved road, and in twenty-thirteen, it completely broke down. The road was almost unusable, uh, because it hadn't been maintained. This county road belongs to you, because it's deed to you. However, there's an MSBU in place, but you can't use the normal tax revenue you get from state for gasoline and diesel taxes to work on that road. It can only be MSBU money. I was told that by Jack Brown back in twenty-thirteen when we figured out how to fix the road, and I was told that by county engineer now, that if you're on the road, you're responsible for it, but you can't spend any money to keep it up, that has to be done by the residents of the subdivision. Since it's a county road, anybody can use it. Anybody can go down any county road anywhere in the county unless there's some specific restrictions on it. However, the people who pay to maintain that road, the residents of Strickland Landing subdivision, have no say so with it. Yet here I stand, asking you to not let somebody tear up my road, so we'll have to fix it, because you're not gonna have the money to fix it. You can't, you can't use tax money to fix it. A few weeks ago, I corresponded with Commissioner Moody, and I made a suggestion on this subject, and that was to amend the land development code for Taylor County, so that when a subdivision was being considered, that the access road to that subdivision had to be of the same quality of the roads that were required to be in built in that subdivision, because they do vary depending on the subdivision, internal roads, necessarily that'll have to be the same. I just spoke with Mr. Moody, and he says that still is, is under consideration. But right now, the concurrency, which is the term they use to determine whether the access road is enough to meet the demands of, of development, all they consider is traffic flow. They don't consider the quality, condition, or anything else of the road. Our road right now is milled asphalt. We paid forty-four thousand dollars in twenty-thirteen for the whole subdivision, there's three roads. Buy that asphalt and the county pitched in ten thousand dollars from where Jack got it from, but they spread it, packed it down, and, and it's already deteriorating. All it is is gravel, little bit, like I say, milled asphalt, and it packed down. It serves our purpose. It will not withstand this traffic. In this present condition, there's no way that it's gonna be able to take the additional traffic that's gonna be generated by this subdivision. You just simply cannot allow this thing to move forward until the problem with Strickland Landing Drive is solved. And I think the people that live on Strickland Landing Drive, that pay the money into this MSBU, should be able to have a direct input into whatever resolution you're working on. Last item has to do with financing. On the website, they made the statement that they weren't going to use conventional financing to build out this subdivision. Conventional financing mean they borrow the money from some financial institution. They referred to bridge financing. In this case, they solicited through their website, potential future lot owners who become investors in Strickland Landing subdivision. In turn, for doing this investment, those potential lot owners would get a discount on their lot, substantially, and they would get to choose the lot that they want, which I don't have a problem with. One of the problems I do have with what was in the website is that it said that that loan would be guaranteed by the value of the land, which has been purchased for this subdivision, and the infrastructure. Well, that land already has a mortgage on it that's one-hundred percent plus of the sale value, of sale amount of that land, so it's fully mortaled. So they can't offer it to secure to these potential investors. The infrastructure doesn't exist, so if these people are giving money for, as an investment to lazy tortoise, I don't see where it's backed up by any of them. I received a written comment from the staff at lazy tortoise. They've responded to inquiries through their website, and it states, first, there are no more creek lots remaining. The inquiry, this person was interested in one. Next, there are no more investor lots available, since it's not lawful to sell a lot in a subdivision until that lot has, until the whole subdivision has final plat approval by the commission. I'm assuming that lazy tortoise may have those seven investments. That's what they were asking. That would create a little over two million dollars. Where is that money? They said that we're gonna put it in an escrow account. In a conversation I had with Ken Dudley, if an escrow account is utilized to ensure that the roads are gonna be built in the subdivision, Taylor County has control of that escrow account, not outside. Other pertinent items that have to do with financial aspect of it is in the original website back in March, the list price of lots in this subdivision was three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars for five acre lots. I looked at the sales that had taken place on Strickland Landing over the last year or so, year and three months. That price is up to four times the price of any sale that's taken place on Strickland Landing Drive. So it is accessible. I, I believe personally that they set the price that high, because the discounting it would be enable them to get these investors that they see, but that's a personal opinion. These investors can't have any ownership in any of these lots, because the lots don't exist. If they did collect that amount of money, the inflation rate we have right now, nine percent, if that estimate was correct to build these roads, it probably isn't correct anymore, and what they collected is insufficient, where are they gonna get the remainder from? They probably have a plan, but I think that's something the county commissioner should be looking at. This bridge financing, of having people who might very well be out of the state of Florida, invest money in the subdivision to be built, is a recipe for disaster. If something turns sour with this subdivision and these people lose all a part of their money, they may very well come to the board of county commissioners, Taylor County, and say, "Well, what happened? You don't look into this, and I'm not having any answer." So if this... So if this bridge financing is taking place, you're now aware of it, and you need to look into just what is encompassed. I would recommend that as a future policy item, that this board simply say that bridge financing of this nature involving future lot owners is just not something you're going to allow to happen for two. If you're going to build a subdivision, you need to finance it conventionally. Because they borrowed money from the bank, those are big boys. They know how to deal with developing, they know how to launder money. Now you're dealing with potentially an individual who might be located in San Diego, California, Chicago, Oklahoma. As I said, I have extra copies of the information that was sent out in April, and if you're interested in the citation concerning the comprehensive plan, I have a couple of pages that provide a copy of, of the page in the word. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Be for or against it, or just make comments? Sure? And no one else?
No one else to speak.
Why? Uh, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for coming. Uh, we will go to item number four, the board to discuss the first of the St. Hachi Garden Club, the name of the garden at St. Hachi Community Center, the High Urban Heathen Memorial Garden.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was speaking to that matter, or our folks today. I was contacted by Martha Wright, who is a pastor at the Church St. Hachi, and also president of the St. Hachi Garden Club, and Heathen passed away, um, as I understand it, on June 14th. He was a very active member of the St. Hachi Garden Club. What a garden club and, and the church is in support of doing is they would like to purchase a bench, a plaque, for his honor, place that at the garden, so the quest would be in the support, board request would be that they be allowed to, they're going to use their funds to purchase that, so it wouldn't cost exactly, but recognize their point of measure of garden care in this respect. That was my, that was my, except for the question by the board members, was the board stocks in favor?
You have anyone from the public here?
I don't believe they were going to come up and say that.
Okay. Permission?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Have you had any, the folks you talked to, you had anyone opposed it at all? I have not. There, there were, um, by knowledge, 42 members, um, in the garden club, but I don't know of any opposition, and there were 35 church members that were, they even spoke about that. I, I mean, I was supportive.
I have no problem with it, neither, it sounds like a good idea.
Would the plaque be something on a pole that's in the ground? Is that what?
I believe it is. It's either going to be attached to that bench, something like a maintenance that's going to withstand the weather and, and it could be enhanced in representation. It serves as a garden club, so, um, that's, that's why I presented that, means I hope to the board about that.
Okay. You can make a decision in that.
Do you wish for me to place on the next agenda?
Oh, please, ma'am.
Are you sure? Um, yes. There was a caller that was inadvertently overlooked, he wished to speak at the, during the last item. It was caller number 5424, and I apologize, I, Martha sent me a text, so I didn't see it.
Caller number's what?
5424.
The number 5424, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
My name is Coleman Stefanovich, 3613, Strickland Landing Drive, area four.
Okay. You would like to address the board of the workshop item?
Yes, uh, thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay.
I'm telling you for putting this on your, this important issue on your agenda. I would like to speak to the bigger picture. Mr. Ferguson did a fine job of speaking specifically to the development, but I'd like to speak to the bigger picture that I think confronts the county in the long term, which is RV What's happening is, in this development, I think at the end of the day, you are going to have an RV park. What you're looking at is an RV park that consists of 180 RV sites. I believe that Taylor County is one of two counties in Florida that allows this kind of density on like five acre parcels of up to four, at least four RV sites. I do not believe there will be residential homes on these parcels, I think they will be bought for investment purposes to build RV sites and rent them out and help cover the debt service on their investment, ads have been advertised on the website. So if that's what the county wants to do in these rural areas, is allow people to buy rural land and turn it into an RV park with that kind of density and the stress that is put on the county in terms of whatever it may be, fire, police, waste, then that's, that's a decision that you'll have to make. So what's happened on our, on our street, there've been two, few people that have bought five acre parcels or something in that neighborhood, of which I've had conversations with, and not most of them out of state. And I asked them, why did they, you know, how did they come about buying this property? I bought 10 acres there 12 years ago and built a home. I'm a Feridians, born and raised in Florida. I fell in love with Taylor County many years ago, but decided upon my retirement to build this dream home in this dream location in Taylor County as a residential, as a residential home. Having no idea that I'd be surrounded by RV campsites some 10 years later. But that's the trend that's happening because the two people that bought those lots from out of state said, this is one of two counties in Florida that we can do this. We're not going to live here, we're going to put our camper here, we're going to rent out, we're going to rent out site for other campers, and we can do this in Taylor County. So what I, what concerns me, as many others, is that this whole RV scheme in terms of buying properties, buying up rural land and turning it into RV parks, this will be for races, and we're going to become the RV capital of Florida, in Taylor County. Because I think the word's getting out and, and, um, it's just going to be something of the future. So anyway, that's the big picture. I would like for the county, and many others would like for the county to consider is this whole RV density, how long do you want this to continue? Is there a point where you stop this? And what has taken place could be grandfathered in, within whatever ordinances need to be changed to prevent this type of possibly unwanted growth, uh, action could be taken? So that's pretty, that's really pretty much all I have to say, is just, you know, asking the county commissioners to please take a look at the big picture and have had to do with RV density and what's happening in Taylor County. I think Tom did a great job in, in addressing what's really an issue related to people in, in the immediate community in terms of the road and, uh, what we will be confronted with.
And what's your name?
My name's Coleman Stefanovich.
Are you getting with that last name? How you spell it?
S.T.I.P. Paul, A.N.O., V is Victor, I.C.A.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I could add just a minute.
Okay.
Coleman Maney. This is lazy tortoise, that's Coleman. He bought a 10 acre lot surrounded by woods and this subdivision goes through with a lot of RV sites. His 10 acres and beautiful $300,000 home he's going to have is going to be surrounded by. You know, that's, that's the world. That was, when he, when he said the number 5424, I said, I know that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Okay. Got another one? Got another one? We're working. Forward. Talk about Mr. Moody.
So we'll, we'll place that on the next agenda.
Okay. So we go to number five, the board to discuss the Taylor County River Light Maintenance.
Um, Victor Blanco, our marine agent, is here to bring us all up to speed on endeavor.
Yeah. We're in patient area of marine, senior. This is just a brief, uh, resume of, uh, like a timeline of some of the activities that we have pursued regarding this, uh, this project. So, um, yes, uh, has a background in 2017, uh, when I was less than a year in the position, um, I got assigned to move forward with the process to get a contractor for a three years contract to do the river light, uh, system maintenance for Taylor County. That includes the system in, uh, Osilla, Eucina, Pen Holloway, Springwater. So the, the idea is to go there quarterly, just, uh, make sure that the, um, solar panels are working, that the wiring is okay, that the battery is working properly, do some service and cleaning, because birds, you know, they, they stay there a lot and their food really can mess up everything and reduce the, the lifetime of the equipment and, and just how it works. And make sure that if a bulb was failing, so the, the person could change the bulb and all that. And after, uh, in 2000, uh, December 2017, we received, uh, one, uh, proposal from Pine Island, and that was $10,000 per quarter. So the whole contract was about, I think, $250,000, way up, way above the budget we have for that. Uh, we decided to re-advertise in January 2018, and then we did, uh, we didn't receive any proposal for that bidding process. We went out again for a new process, uh, party being specific, uh, we had a list of, of potential contractors, and then we received a note vote, uh, from Kettering, uh, Kettering Pilot Technologies and one from Kents Concrete Pumping, which was 23, uh, $2,375 quarter. Uh, based on the information that we have on files and, you know, the information we received from Pine Island, uh, we decided to move forward and, and make the contract for three years with Com, uh, Kents Concrete Pumping Services. Uh, so in May 2018, that contract was signed, it was 9,500 annually, and, uh, during that three years, uh, contract period, they did a great job, uh, quarterly, they, they submit all the information. We never had an issue with the, the, uh, light systems, basically. Uh, in that time, one of the hurricanes came and turned down the, the platform and the light system in Osilla, uh, through FEMA, we got the funding and that was built up again, and then the light system in Osilla was changed to a different setting. Uh, it was a like self-contained device, uh, and it was recommended that, uh, you know, we, we consulted like three or four, uh, people in town who know about this, and they said that that seems to be like good equipment. It was, in, I think it was like 3, uh, $3,500, the equipment. So, uh, that's the only system that is different from, from the setting of the other two rivers. As the, uh, expiration of that contract came closer, we, uh, I moved forward and decided to start the new bidding process, so the transition was, you know, small. Uh, we, uh, put that together in March, uh, 2021, we, uh, advertised a request for proposals, and then we received, uh, in April, uh, the board received Kents Concrete, uh, $2,575 quarterly, so it was just an increase of $200 per quarter. Uh, however, the proposal was dismissed by one of the bidding committee members due to insurance, uh, and here's where the things have started to get a little bit complicated. Because in the previous, uh, contract, uh, the contractor just had their commercial insurance, and so the county was covered under their commercial insurance, that's contracted. Uh, but now we were requesting, uh, the works comp to be addressed on that. So, uh, we re-advertise, asking for that documentation as part of the bidding package, and, um, only one proposal was received by the same leader, which was Kents Concrete again, and then the, uh, the annual, uh, amount was $40,000, so he could, you know, pay for that extra thing. Actually, I think we, we request some, uh, consultation with, um, with the county attorney to, to make sure to understand a little bit more about that. We had other negotiations.
It's the longshore, it's longshoremen's workers' comp insurance, which is, it can be very expensive, and we have looked at every way possible to, um, to ensure that that's something that we, you know, you can't get it for a certain number of days. Even if one of our employees was to perform this work, we would have to have a separate policy to cover the, these marine contact activities.
That's correct. Yes. Marines, oh, Marines couldn't get it done?
The, the longshoremen's.
They had to, any work they do out there, and you all have to have done, you have to have a longshoreman license?
It's, it's an insurance policy.
Yeah, okay.
Specifically for work done, um, on a boat, um, and with certain structures.
That's correct.
It's quite complicated.
Yeah. It's, it's quite complicated. So, of course, that amount, uh, from Kents was out of the budget, and we decided to go out again and, uh, re-advertise, uh, try to reach out more contractors. To be honest, that's a, a big challenge, especially when it comes to, uh, contracts someone to do works on the water. Um, some of the few contractors, they really like to, oh, they're very busy, private working, uh, so they're not too interested in this kind of things. However, uh, in July, uh, no, in April, uh, again, we, we came out with a new proposal, and then we received a proposal from, uh, Big Ben Seaton. Yeah, so that's what they do. So we thought that was going to be okay, and when they submitted their, uh, insurance, they didn't have, uh, works comp, they were exempt, and they were covered under another type of insurance. But, uh, again, uh, the, one of the members of the committee said that if, if there's not works comp, we, the county should not move forward and issue a contract with this contractor. Uh, we feel, or I feel as leading this, this process, being pre, pre-process already, and I, I feel we, we reached a point that I, I really don't know what else I can do. and it, I, I feel we, we reached a point that I, I really don't know what else I can do. Uh, so we have discussed, uh, alternatives like reducing the number of times that contractor can go into water instead of quarterly going, uh, twice a year. Uh, another option that we, uh, discussed was maybe just go on a, uh, mid-basis, uh, once a year. Uh, so we just call once a year contractor, uh, not, not a contract, just, just request quote and you get to go do this job once in one time and done. Um, and, um, I think that those were the two that we basically discussed, right?
Right, so there was a discussion of basically moving, you know, one of the options was, okay, maybe every six months we check because, um, another option was we could just replace the lights every year, um, because that was actually a little more cost-effective than entering into this contractual agreement. Um, basic, and what we've been doing for the last year is basically taking reactive stance. So if we receive a report that the lights are not functioning properly, we reach out to a contractor and they, they service these entrance lights. So the option is rather than them being proactive, we can continue to be reactive. My understanding, I know, my understanding from our engineer is that there is sufficient reflective material on these, on these platforms
That's right.
that the light is not necessary, correct? Because there is reflective markings on them. But I think there's a couple of options we have. Really, the, the basis of the concern is the need for this longshoreman's coverage. And I think, and when I reached out to our insurance carrier, they didn't know if it was necessary or not based upon the task that we're asking for because we're not asking for someone to go offshore. You know, these are river entrance lights. But when we, from what I recall, even when we tried to research it ourselves and Conrad helped us, it looked like any type of activity where you're on a boat, um, could, there could be the exposure. Um, and of course, we, and I don't believe that we will be covered under general liability if it's that type of activity. Um, it's very specific. So the only way we're really going to ever know if this is absolutely necessary type of coverage for us to have would be to hire a marine attorney. Is that the right term, Conrad?
Maritime.
Maritime, thank you. Maritime attorney to really research the scope of work, which is an option. I mean, that's something that we could do as well. I, I have no idea of the cost for something like that. Um, Conrad, didn't we maybe find somebody in South Florida? I'm trying to recall if there was.
We didn't, but we can, you know? But, you know, I thought maybe, uh, I got some silly ideas on that.
We've tried to be very creative.
Yeah, you know, have a helicopter. And fix the light. Above.
And, and we, we even researched having one of our employees and service the lights. But when I reached out to our carrier, I was told you still have to have this separate policy, which is not cost-effective. You can't purchase it for a, a, a particular.
It's my suggestion is, uh, this was one of my suggestions, is to do it once a year and also, uh, be sure and monitoring the lights. You know, have one of your, your people monitor the lights so if one goes out, then we'll know to go ahead and fix it. Instead of doing, you know, quarterly like, you know, with the big $40,000, um, insurance. So, uh, if we can get a, uh, uh, somebody or a contractor that would, that would, uh, agree to change the lights once a year. Or the alternative, uh, monitor them and then when one light goes out, just have somebody go out there, put a new light in. But again, it would, it would be required that, that they needed to be monitored, uh, pretty regularly, um, uh, so that you would, you would be covered, uh, with the lights, you know, year-round. I just, you know, it just goes against the grain to have to pay $40,000 a year for something that costs, what does it cost us to put new lights on?
Yeah, it would be like $4,000 per light.
Yeah, I mean, it's more for the insurance than it is for the lights.
I don't think that the policy for us, well, I, I believe, didn't we look at that picture and the policy started at like $8,000?
My secretary called it.
Yeah. I don't know that it would be that much, but I did.
Well, that's the figure that I, that, that I heard just a minute ago. And I, I'd heard that figure before, um, you know, when you were talking to me, when you came by to talk to me about it.
I think that was the figure we got from.
And I also suggested that we check with other, um, areas, uh, that have those type of lights, um, and how do they handle it with regard to the changing of the lights and, and so forth. In other words, what do they do over in Panacea? What do they do, um, uh, in Destin? What do they do in Panama City? Um, which are, you know, they've got a whole office, well, you know, Panama City would have more traffic, so Destin. So, you know, what's their, what's, what's their, uh, remedy on that? Because, you know, that, that, their longshoreman insurance would be more than what ours would be depending on traffic, right? It would seem to me.
I think it would just depend on the number of hours the person gets in the water performing the job and, and not necessarily the number of lives.
Are all the lights working right now?
Yes, they are working right now.
Praise the Lord. Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I was an insurance agent 100 years ago and, um, Lawanda's comment that there would have to be a separate policy surprises me because I have been out of this field for quite a number of years, I'm retired. But when I was a commercial underwriter, we could endorse, we could put an endorsement on to a policy if we underwritten it and feel like the exposure was, was reasonable. And almost all workers' comp premium that you have for all your employees is payroll based. Or in the case of hiring a general contractor, if you have to pay it, they count the whole contract cost as payroll. And it's hard for me to believe that if you're only having a contract that's $10,000 totally to do this work, that the cost of the longshoreman's insurance, um, for essentially four days' work, which all amounts to, could, could be $40,000. Something, something doesn't match. And, um, uh, when he mentioned the other cities and so forth, since you're only having to do this three or four times a year, if some other community like Panis City or Destin or somebody has it set up to do theirs, like he said, find out how they're doing it and have them come down here. I mean, it ain't that far a drive to get from there to here, do one day's work. It might run your contract cost up a few thousand dollars, but if somebody's getting it done somewhere else, you know, utilize that guy. Take him fishing.
So I did reach out to our carrier and made sure that we all understood the type of coverage that would be required. And, um, so our, our employees would be specifically excluded from this type of coverage. It's called US H and L. They would be specifically excluded. So it, it's not something that our liability, um, or workers' comp carrier, um, can offer to us because they're excluded.
I, I understand it. And, and when I was with the travelers, we were the same way. There would be exposures for longshoremen's that we were not comfortable with, but if somebody had an incidental exposure, it might be involved. I put the endorsement on to a workers' comp policy a number of times and, because I didn't expect to have an exposure, but if it showed up, my insurer wasn't without coverage.
Right.
Apparently your insurance company is willing to do that.
Well, they're the ones who advised us to seek the opinion of a maritime attorney if we wanted to move forward with this endeavor and tried to accomplish it in-house because they could not advise us if these particular activities would even require the US H and L coverage.
I almost assure you that it does, especially if you have claim. Because if you end up going to some kind of court, the court's gonna say yes because reasons longshoreman is so expensive as an insurance, the benefits are very, very, very high if somebody gets hurt. You can have this building claim might run a million dollars or something under longshoremen, whereas for a truck driver from the county, it might be $200,000.
So, so you see how complicated it's been for us to try to resolve this issue?
You might get a cheaper answer by going to an insurance company that specializes in marine stuff. They will advise you over the phone if you're willing to take that kind of advice. They're not gonna charge you $500 an hour than a maritime attorney would charge you. And there are, if you're gonna have to go to Tampa, Miami, Jacksonville, find that kind of insurance company.
Thank you. Now.
I'll give your public comments on Curtis. Um, when I used to work at a public agency, we could all, we had it where we could piggyback under other agencies' existing contracts. It may be if Bakala County has a contract, they would appreciate you being up under their contract and perhaps absorb some of their insurance costs. With as many coastal counties as there are in Florida, this is not the only place, Taylor County's not the only place that faces this kind of maintenance. And it may be that if you reach out to some other counties or municipalities, you might could come under their umbrella a little.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
And then after you finish this, I got one other question about the River Lights.
Okay. Now, the River Lights, we're working on.
Yeah.
Right, we're trying to.
Okay.
Well, honestly, we, um, just wanted to update the board on why we have not moved forward with a contract as of yet. We can continue to work on this issue and in the meantime, we'll continue to be reactive. Victor, how could we internally monitor the river entrance lights?
I don't know who has the capabilities to go and do the check because anyway, we, we'll just need to go and climb on the tower and manipulate the, uh, light system, what triggers, you know, it has a sensor that when the light is just like a car, when it gets dark, it triggers the system.
Which would be this type of activity that would be excluded from a workers' comp unless we had that US.
That's exactly what I'm, I'm not sure. It's the confusion caused, yeah.
Right. So that's why we've been in a reactive stance, just trying to work through, um, the best way to move forward with, with a contract so we could, so we can have either the twice-a-year or quarterly checks on the system.
I think there, there have been several suggestions and what I'd like to see is that, uh, you know, when y'all bring back options to us and, um, go from there. But, you know, I frequently, well, I get calls, especially from the Ecomena area, um, with the lights being out. And we all know when the fog rolls in, uh, you can't see. And so, you know, we need to try to find something as fast as we can. Um, and with the monitoring, how, so how frequently could we monitor the lights?
I guess I need a definition of monitoring that would not require any type of maritime activity.
Yeah, I, usually I think the best way is through the users, right? So if, if they are out there, uh, we can just maybe have, or try to find someone in all of these areas and say, well, once in a while, I'm gonna give you a call and say, you, you see that the system is working or not? You see any issue? Uh, that might be just, just a visual, uh, someone visually just saying, yes, this system is working or I, I feel something is going on.
Okay, so right now, if I report, um, a light being out, and so what do we do? Who do we, who do we get to go change that and fix it?
For now, this year, we have been using Seaton. Seaton.
We got a contractor.
Yeah, yeah, Seaton. So we call them by, it's just for that activity. So, uh, we, we call them, we make a, uh, uh, we request quote, I think they're charging like $200 an hour, uh, for that. And they just go do the check. Uh, the last time, uh, the purchase order was for $1,000 and at the end, the invoice came back with $500, for example. So they only charge like two and a half hours, something like that. Uh, that's the way we've been working so far.
Thank you.
Um, I think if y'all reached out to FWC, they're on the water a lot more than most of these lights at night. They do a lot of observation out there. I think they would be more than happy to report back to someone if they had someone at the county to do that to.
Yeah, I can reach out to, to the tenant and just, just to make sure that he has staff in the, in the area.
And it's not everybody and you're getting it there on the water more than most of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, catch quick.
Now, you had another question?
It's, it's kind of related in that the whole purpose of these River Lights are, um, navigational and safety. And is there anything in the county for like, do y'all require that kind of lighting or safety lighting on private boat docks or anything that extends out in the river? What else is there? I'm about to build a boat dock, so I just, it's crossed my mind that, if there, uh, Danny's pointed me to Swanee River and D P on any permitting issues, but they don't require lights on private docks. But do y'all?
I don't believe we do. I don't recall seeing anything that I didn't know.
I haven't noticed any, but it, the whole thing kind of triggered and, and part of it was, uh, several years ago, a friend of mine got killed on the Swanee River in a boating accident, hitting a, a dock. So, you know, I was just curious if there was any kind of requirement for us or construction. It's, so it's kind of a related topic, but I don't wanna get, if we don't, we don't. I won't worry with it, but since he was bringing it up, I just thought I'd ask about private dock issues.
Down the river and you see the light, it's a blessing.
Oh, yeah.
And Seaton has been a blessing.
Particularly when you're coming in later than you should.
Could you just verify, uh, Lawanda, that we don't have anything that, any requirements?
I mean, I don't know of any. I don't recall.
And I'm not asking for a new regulation or anything. I don't want to plead ignorance. The biggest thing is I don't want there to be an accident. I guess that's just not acceptable.
You go to number six, the board to discuss the request and name of person of the Highway 19 after Deputy Scott Williams.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was recently contacted by one of Detective Williams' former partners and wired about four weeks forward for this potential. And I spoke with, uh, Detective Williams' family and also reached out to the Sheriff's Department. So those folks have worked with Scott Williams and everybody's in support of seeking out this, um, well, I understand being legislation requests to, he brought four legislators in that session, seek out, um, areas, accident levels and.
Is that one that got the beach road in 19, the Rock River?
Yes. Speaking with all those folks, hold them, like, back to, and we're starting a conversation. So they can stay.
I would support that.
I'd support it. I'd support it. So what would you, would you add?
Uh, so we would have to do some research and then provide the information to our county attorney for a resolution?
Right, uh, then of course it would have to be.
Right, and of course, it would have to be on the area that's not on the city because the city is Byron Butler.
Yes, sir. It's down towards Be True.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying. And I don't know that you might, we might have to go to the legislature, you know?
Yes, sir.
And what you do with the legislature is they say, okay, well, prepare it and send it to them. That's, that's how they do it. That's not hard, you know, but we, we need to know exactly what area that we would request to be named after Deputy Williams.
I believe I can get that information from the sheriff's office.
Okay, well, we'll put it on the agenda. Do I need to put it on the agenda?
So the portion of 19 that we dedicated to the gentleman on the other side of the, did that go through the legislature?
I believe so.
Or Trump or Kennedy. Really?
No, no, no. I think you're talking about the, the officer with.
It was just on the other side of Icunfina River on North 19.
Right, north of town.
He worked for Department of Air.
Thank you. I couldn't remember.
So that went through the legislature?
I will double check on that. I believe so.
Any of the brown and yellow signs has to go through the legislature.
I believe that agency requested the resolution from the board, but I'll.
Well, they don't want, y'all don't want the state to give you maintenance of South 19 back to you.
I know.
That's why you need to add to the legislature.
Next meeting or can we go longer than that?
Give me just a little bit of time, and we'll bring it back to the board. Connor, are you asking the board to direct you to prepare a resolution? Is that what you want? Okay. So I'll just get the information to you.
Yeah, get the information to me, and then they can direct, they can direct us at the next regular meeting. Okay, you understand what I'm saying?
Sure.
Next regular meeting, y'all can direct us to, we'll start on it, but y'all can direct us to do the resolution and request the legislature.
That's next Monday, right?
We don't want to step on anybody's toes.
Okay.
I'm trying to tell y'all.
All right. We go to board to discuss House Bill 53, reported due June 30, 2022.
So on, at your, at your place, I just wanted to provide draft reports that we have prepared to submit to the state. It's due by Saturday, so we'll have to submit Friday. We have, so House Bill 53 is a requirement, I discussed with you a couple of meetings ago, where we must submit basically a 20-year plan to the state, and it has to include certain maintenance costs or infrastructure costs. We have to submit for the city, for dependent districts, and also for the county. We have received the information from the city and from Taylor Coastal Water and Sewer District. We have that compiled, and our information is substantially complete. I did want to let you know on page six of the background information report, we are estimating that we have 119,000 feet of buried culverts, and that we have 541 miles of open ditches and conveyance that are maintained by our agency. We have listed the number of ponds that we maintain and gone through basically all of the parts of the report. We also report, we estimated the routine operation and maintenance to be at approximately 30% of the public works budget, so those are the numbers that we use for that. And then we, we estimated the increase of expenditures for the next five years at 5% a year, just as an average or an estimated cost. We also reported under future expansion with a committed funding source, the Steen Hatchie flooding, we, and that's a report that is being carried out by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and that we have dedicated ARPA funds to cover any improvements in that area and also Taylor County flooding projects. So under flood protection, we notated. On page four of part five, so it would be the second handout that I gave you. We also reported under flood protection, expansion projects with no identified funding source, Ellison Road Outfall Conveyance and Turner Road Middle Warrior Creek as potential And then the rest of the report is basically funding sources for actual expenditures. So since we're running so short on time to try to get off, this is one of those unfunded mandates that we are responsible for. Staff has worked pretty diligently, along with City Perry, Taylor Coastal Water and Sewer District, to gather all this information. This is for stormwater and wastewater. Since we don't have a closed conveyance system, it was probably a little easier for us to, to gather these numbers. So like I said, we will be, plan to submit this information to the state on Friday. So if you have any questions, please just let me know. My goal is to get this submitted and, and completed as soon as possible. It's been a little bit of a job, and Kenneth and Hank were very helpful gathering this information.
Thank you.
We go to item eight, the board to further discuss RV density.
So at one of the meetings in June, I believe, it was placed on the agenda, Commissioner Moody spoke to us about the, if there was any desire for the board to, to consider any type of limitations of RV density. I believe at that time, the concern was our rural areas, and so the board really didn't make, y'all didn't make the commitment, but wanted to discuss it at a workshop. So my question is, is if you want us, you know, staff to try to gather information to bring back to the board, I, I understand there are some concerns about density, and this would be mainly in the, I think there are concerns all over the county, but the concerns that were raised at that time really spoke to our rural areas. And just to give you an example, we have numerous subdivisions that are not fully developed, that there could be an opportunity for folks to really saturate those areas with RVs. I do believe that if we are able, we want to avoid urban sprawl. I think that when you are, when you're considering RV density, it's a little different concern in, in our coastal areas than in some of our rural areas. Because if you look at our coastal areas, and on Yewstein Hatchie is an example, that's a lot of seasonal impacts, and because it's a, it's a concentrated area, then I, I believe that it may not be as much of a challenge to provide higher police protection and to really meet those service needs. The only concern I think that, that staff may have, or the consideration you may, you may want to take under advisement, is if some of our existing subdivisions, if people would like to take advantage of what we have in our certain, in our code, they have the ability to really saturate those areas with RVs. And, and the only reason I bring this to you is because, you know, we've heard several times over the last year or a day or two, that Taylor County is one of the only counties in Florida where people can have RVs, up to four RVs per parcel. For some of these subdivisions, if it's a five acre parcel, that doesn't seem like a lot. If it's a one acre parcel, it may have a bigger impact. And I, so currently, the revenue that you are receiving for those particular areas may be tied to the value of the land. So if this real estate market changes, is that going to change our, our revenue stream, and will we be able to keep up with the growth? So my question is, is that something that you want staff to look at? Is that something you want to consider? Do you want to wait and see what happens? I just need some direction.
For me, I can speak for me. I'd like to throw some look at that because we already, we've got issues. You know, I spoke about this a week or two ago, where you've got this small parcel in a subdivision, and there may be five or six on there. And, you know, I, I get complaints from other residents in there about this kind of thing, so I think we need to, I think we need to look at it.
I'd love to see and research county by county and see how many, each county lets them, how many you can put on the lot in each county. They say, you say there's four in Valley County, but you say we're about the only one in the whole state, is what you've heard?
That's what I heard. I have not researched it because I really didn't want to, didn't wish to delve into it if that was not the direction of the board.
I'd like to see the number from each county.
I'd like to address it for sure. Bring us back some information and.
Is this something that you want to plan to discuss during our, our next strategic planning session, which I'd like to consider maybe somewhere in October or in that timeframe, and really give us a chance?
That would be really good.
I'd like to look at our current subdivisions and see what kind of impact. If, I know Yates Creek, there is, we've seen an increase in, in permits for RVs. So that may be something where people, you know, wish to develop their property, and that's, that's certainly their right. I'm not, there's no, there's no question about how our, how our code reads. It's just if you want to consider the impact of future growth, how would you like that to look?
What need to discuss all about?
I'm in no way, really, a person owns a piece of property, they won't put a camper trailer on it. I'm behind them 100% myself, but if an individual wants to put a camper trailer on a piece of property, I'm behind them, you know?
Well, and I think there are, there are two different impacts that have been brought to the board in the past. In the past, most of any concerns brought by the public were in our, our coastal areas, such as Cedar Island, Keaton Beach, Steen Hatchie, because folks were concerned about property values. If they're, you know, and folks maybe not wanting to build a house if the lot next to them had multiple RVs. So that's a totally separate issue that you can still consider, but, but my question is if you want, you know, how you wish to look at the information when you consider future growth and RV density?
I know, you know, people have called me, and I, and I, you know, the area that I'm talking about where they're just letting anybody and everybody pull up a camper on a little, a little parcel, and then you've got neighbors all up and down the street that are saying, that's going to devalue my property.
So that's, that's one issue, and then the other, you know, that you may wish to consider, and then, like I said, the other issue is really when we look in terms of, of revenue. A property with, with no RVs or with four RVs, the, the revenue that will be generated is primarily the, the property taxes, which are not going to be the same as if you have a site built home. And it will still generate a demand for services. So I know that there are, from what I understand, there are some counties that may have an impact fee, which is a one fee, or there may be an assessment you can consider, if you wish to consider anything at all. But, you know, I think we've all heard that the real estate market could be changing, and how that will affect our, our budget, even for next year, is something that you may kind of take some time to prepare for.
I just feel like we need to bring us some data, bring us a lot of data, and, and then let us go over, you know, or we can do it in a workshop, or we can do it at the strategic planning, but I'd like to, as soon as you give stuff, I'd like to be able to review it.
What I would like to do is maybe just start with our, our subdivisions, and, and look at what type of, of RV density could be in some of our subdivisions, and consider, and I, I don't know, you know, how we'll, how we'll actually come to values, but I, I do think that that's something that we need to try to be prepared for, if, if we feel like that's going to create a larger demand for service.
You know, it will.
Mr. Ferguson, I thought I saw somewhere where it would be 45 homes built, or proposed for 45 homes, and then four trailers to each five acre lot, is that what I, really?
I think there are 45, are there 45 parcels?
That's the potential. Now, how it eventually gets built out, nobody knows. I mean, with the real estate market about to do what you're saying, we don't know, but the, but that's the potential. In Strickland Landing, for instance, I live on Strickland Landing Drive, there's 30 lots. There are only three. Actually, I think there's the two nice site-built homes.
On that road you live on?
Yes. That subdivision was approved in 1997, and a third of the lots on Strickland Landing Drive are still vacant. And about a third of them have, like Mr. Moody was talking about, somebody has bought the lot, and they come in and they put one camper trailer on the lot. Some cases, they live in it full-time. Some cases, and most of them, they come down like six months out of the year. They come down in the wintertime, it gets cold, and then they go back and so forth. From the revenue standpoint, like you mentioned, that camper trailer, you don't get any tax revenue for.
Well, you own the property.
Yeah, and the site, the site itself is valued according to the property appraiser, like a thousand bucks is all they appraise an RV site at. If somebody put a $200,000 home on that site, you wouldn't actually get a significant amount. But, and, and more of those have showed up in the last couple of years than in the whole 15 years I've lived there prior to now, and I, I think you're right. If, I, I'm not inclined, I don't think somebody would be, to come in and buy a five acre lot and put a $300,000 home on it, look out your red and window in the morning and see four camper trailers.
That's been, that's been.
Dealers aren't going to build nice homes where this has occurred, and maybe they won't anywhere. I don't know.
Well, it looked like the selling point, the start with the 45 nice homes, and then the, each trailer site, each site had, would be permitted with four camper trailer, right?
Well, that's.
At 300, 350, I don't know.
Right, that, and what I'm speaking to isn't, isn't, isn't about this, this development at all. I'm just speaking in general terms of other, of, you know, other areas of our county where we may want to consider if there, if there is, could be a potential impact, and I don't know. But before I, you know, invest a lot of staff time in trying to find these answers, I'd like to make sure I understand what the questions may be.
I'm just wanting to give some Sullivan. I owned 30 acres at the end of Strickland Landing Court. I was already there before Strickland Landing division, subdivision was developed, already lived there. It's great that we have that new community there, but down that half-mile road, which is approximately a half-mile, it's one road up from the drive, there are 14 campers right now. Three of those lots have been turned into four campers apiece.
This is where now?
Strickland Landing Court.
Oh, I thought it was Strickland.
It's right before Strickland Landing.
It's all part of that subdivision.
It's part of that subdivision. My daughter owns the very last house on that road. So my family is there. We've been there, been there, well, my family originally put my house in there back in the seventies. So, um, the deal is, is that building in the subdivision is great. We do have two of those sites that have a single camper on them. They are magnificent people. We're not against growth. I'm against the type of growth that's going on where you have four campers here and four campers here and then you have a house in the middle of it. And we have friends who are fixing to be selling their place and right next door is four campers. You, they, they won't get the amount of money that they would have gotten before this happened. Just won't. I mean, it's not valued as much because you've got these people right here looking inside your windows.
The county doesn't get a whole lot out of that in taxes.
But one camper is one thing, four campers is another.
Okay. This, this, this is what I meant, too. Three hundred fifty-five down off the five acre, right?
Well, this, this is totally separate from that.
Yeah, I know.
I, I, yeah, we're not, I mean.
How, how, looks like if, if a person could do that, sell those forty-five lots, three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, he don't really need a whole lot of other things. He got him enough money. How many places in Taylor County you can sell five acres for three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars down?
Nowhere. That, that's a listed price on a website. That's.
It's not going to sell for that.
It's not going to happen?
No.
I, in my opinion, though, while Strickland Landing Drive recently sold a five acre lot that had power, a pole barn, um, for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's within the last couple of months. Prior to that, and, and that, that was a pretty big amount for five acres. I think the three hundred fifty-five thousand, why that number was created, I, I don't know. That would, you know, Mr. Lumber would have, you know, addressed that subject, but, um, it, it is very hot. I don't think it's happening anywhere in Taylor County. However, you know, if you live in California and somebody told you could buy a lot, five acres for three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, you'd think you'd hit the steel. And, uh, and, and if it, and if they sell, then yes. Lazy toilets can sell a lot for three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. You get a lot of tax revenue off of it, even if nobody built a house. But if you put a lot of camper trailers in there, you can almost guarantee that nobody's going to go in there and build a real nice house where there's a bunch of camper trailers. They, they just aren't compatible with one another. And, um, Taylor County needs to decide, do you want to go toward, you know, site-built homes and, and value like you have on golf course roads? You drive down it and everything looks pretty nice. Or do you want to drive down a road and have one, two, three, four camper trailers on each lot? And, and, and that's where the county is headed. You're going that way. Really showing up in the last few years.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That the last name or not? Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I'm just adding to the conversation a little bit.
Go ahead.
Sounds like a density issue. I'm, I have a camper when I go camping places and it's like a Walmart parking lot with water and sewer. It's not desirable having something more dispersed is, but as far as land values, Taylor County has been discovered. I just sold a five acre place down at Keaton Beach for four hundred thousand dollars. So we're, we're saying it doesn't sell for that much, but it's, it's starting to and has fire from out of town. You know, it needs that footwork.
You know, the ones of us that have lived here forever, it's unbelievable to us what things are selling for now. And if I've been out in my district quite a bit lately, um, there are, and I've talked to a lot of people and a lot of these people have moved in here from all over this country and they're buying this property sight unseen. They've never walked in these houses. But they, they're telling me where I came from, especially people down south, we didn't have any trees and the density of the houses, you know, that you can reach out and shake your neighbor's hand almost through your window. And they just think they have just, they are tickled to death. And I know some of the houses, people are saying, can you believe what someone says house sold for? And these people coming in think they're getting a bargain. We're just not used to that. But like you say, dog, it's happening.
And the one I just mentioned was fake land that didn't have a house on it.
Yeah. It's happening.
Four hundred thousand dollars, pew, stroke a check.
Five acres on Strickland Landing Drive appraises for twenty-five thousand dollars. The, the county taxes me for twenty-five thousand dollars for a lot. I don't see how you could sell a lot for four hundred thousand dollars. They ain't worth fifty if it is over at Keaton. You, you're a lucky man.
You are.
Lucky man. You, you.
You know, it's buyers and sellers.
I need some of your talents if I can, I'll buy a bunch of land if I could sell it for four hundred thousand.
So what I think I'm hearing the board say is that you just wish for me to, to research maybe, you know, the, the possible effect in our, in our rural areas of, of the type of RV density that is allowable and maybe what other counties do, what some of their ordinance is and, um, maybe potential revenue streams if we get to the point where the ad verum, um, taxes do not generate enough revenue for us to provide service at a certain level. Is that accurate? Just for me.
I'm thankful, I'm terribly, I couldn't do it. Gathered information on this, I think, uh, we think that, that lowering the density in these, locate in these rural areas, thinking that folks are going to run in and build houses to increase our tax revenue. I don't, I, I, I don't imagine. Obviously it would increase our tax revenue, but if we're thinking they're going to do it in a, a year or two to, to help offset the losses that we would have, I mean, I don't, I don't see that happening, but.
And that's possible. I, I, I don't think that this is, um, something that's necessarily an immediate problem. It's just something that we may need to consider, looking at, and, you know, so we'll be prepared if, if we get to a point where it becomes a problem. And, and I would be curious to see how other counties that maybe don't allow that type of density, why they don't and what the dynamics are in those counties and why they made the decision they did.
Yeah, that, yeah, and we're, we're experiencing growth like I've never seen now and I, and I think it's only going to, uh, get worse because people have discovered Taylor County, they've discovered our coastline, they've discovered our farmland. They know we're here.
And, and I think.
If the people know the Florida, they.
Well, that's where I was, was going to say next. We know that there is increased, um, increased growth in Florida in general. That, and so as the south end of the state becomes more and more saturated, then I believe that growth is heading in our direction. And we just may want to consider if we're prepared for that.
You know, I'm, I'm for some growth, but I don't want to be South Florida. You know, I don't want us to be South Florida. I don't want us to be Central Florida. You have something here that we value. What'd you say?
If you take into account the thing called the villages in Lake and Sunkirk County, Central Florida is worse.
We don't, we don't want to go there.
That's why I live in Taylor County.
And one of the things that happened with the RVs I'm telling you about down Strickland Landing Court is most of the trees and brush was cut away. So now you can see, that's part of what happened as well is with the clearing of the land to make room for this many pole barns with campers that all of the, everything was cut. And you have to do that to be able to develop, but it's massive. Like my daughter's house, she couldn't see from the road, now you can see it from the road. Yeah, that, you're unhappy with things like that. It's not normal, normal house building, roads, uh, yard development.
Anything else? Not? Leave me alone.
Yeah, I just want to tell everybody thank you for being here because, you know, I'm, I like to hear ideas. I want to hear from the public. I want to know what you're thinking and, and, you know, we don't know everything and we can't come up with all the solutions. And there's been some great things said here tonight that I'll be thinking about. So thank y'all for being here and come back again.
It ain't no, it ain't no who is this.
Appreciate you, gentlemen.